All right, so I'll call the meeting to order at 7:05. Can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Allred.
Here.
Mr. Andreessen. Mr. Fell. Mr. Hopkins.
Here.
Ms. McFarland. Rose.
Here.
Ms. Sims.
Here.
Here.
All right, so it looks like we have a quorum. Are there any changes to the agenda?
There are none.
All right, so we have three previous meeting minutes to approve. Approval of the minutes of the July 11th, 2024, regular meeting of the Plan Commission. Are there any motions or comments on the meeting from the minutes from that meeting?
I'm gonna guess I may be the only one who read them. And you read them? Okay, so do we have, can we just do them all three at once?
Can we do them all three?
Yeah, you can do them all three at once.
Okay, great.
So I would make a comment that they are extensive and Terry did an amazing job of capturing things. There are a few typos, but they may actually be spicos. That is, sometimes we don't say what we mean. But I think we should move to approve the minutes, all three of them.
All right, so we have a motion by Mr. Hopkins. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Sims. Any discussion on the minutes? All right, we'll do a voice vote. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, that passes. Communications, do we have any communications?
We do not.
And we have no continued public hearings, no old business, no new business, I mean, no new public hearings and no new business. Audience participation. Audience. Yeah, these are all of my students, so. That said, you're welcome to address the Plan Commission on a topic of your choice if you would like. There are no takers. We will move on to, do we have a staff report?
Yeah, we do. So I'm excited to share the news that we have our first new zoning district in many years. The CMU district was approved by city council. And just one note, they did opt to go with the 120-foot building height.
All right. That brings us to the study session. Turned over to staff.
Okay, good evening. So yeah, we're excited to be back here for another Imagine Urbana study session. So yeah, just real briefly, we want to keep our comments relatively brief so that we can get, you know, get into discussion and the meat of the study session. But just for kind of an overall outline of what we're going to be talking about here. So first, we're gonna give an introduction here. Then I'll discuss sort of what we heard from the August 22nd study session. And then we'll talk about the, the structure of the current comprehensive plan and then also of Imagine Urbana. Then we'll go through the meeting materials for these informal neighborhood meetings that we're having coming up. Then we'll do some review of those materials, the maps especially. And then we wanted to sort of get Plan Commission's thoughts on topics for, for future study sessions and then talk a little bit about public input on Imagine Urbana. So, so first off, sort of to recap last time, there was a lot of discussion. So we tried to kind of distill sort of some common themes and main points, but if I left anything out, feel free to, to add to that. So really, what, what we heard are these things on, on the slide here. So one is that the level of detail is an open issue. Another is that certain terms are too vague and they need, need some contextualization. So especially things like walkability and incremental development. So we are planning to address some of those things with sort of callouts within the plan that get a little bit more, more into detail with those. Another is that really public access to the maps and their readability is key. Another is that the future land use types need some more discussion before we move on with those. Another is that we need to establish really a common understanding of what the, the comprehensive plan is or should be. I don't think that was articulated explicitly at the last meeting, but I, I think there is, that was sort of a feel that we got coming out of that meeting. Another is that we need to test out the plan. Once we have it in a certain state that we feel we can, we can test it out based on sort of the different users that will be using the plan. But the big thing, or the, the upshot of that meeting, the immediate concern is we have these public meetings coming up. So we need to create content for the neighborhood meetings. And the public really needs things like maps and other content to respond to. So to that end, we've been working hard and we've been working fast with, with Dustin's plan making class. And Lou's been involved in that as well to really produce the materials that we're going to be using for, for those public meetings. So we're really excited to share progress on, on those tasks. There's six main tasks and then a project manager task, which is super important for, for these types of things as well. As we pointed out in the, when we were going through the agenda, several of the students are here tonight. I've been really, I think we've all been really happy with the, the progress that's been made so quickly. So it's really, it's really exciting stuff. So thank you, students, and look forward to continuing to work with you. And then a couple other things we heard. I think I'd be remiss if I didn't quote a couple of direct quotes here. So one thing we heard at last meeting was to think centennially and act daily. So we're keeping that top of mind. Yes, and that was, that was from our very own Lou Hopkins. And then another was that aspiration without implementation is a dream. I believe that was you, Carol. You, yes, from, from, okay. So I'm gonna turn it over to Andrea and she's gonna walk through sort of the, the structure of the current and future comp plan.
This one or that one? Which, yeah, that might be easier.
Yeah.
Thank you. We thought we'd, just based on the conversation from the last study session, thought it was be important to just give some additional context about the Imagine Urbana plan, how it came to be, just some of the thought process behind that. So first off, just the overriding goals that we had for the plan. We wanted to listen to all the voices of Urbana. We tend to, government just tends to hear from the same people all the time. We really did an extensive outreach to make sure that we gave an opportunity to everyone to be able to be heard. We also wanted to learn from the 2005 comprehensive plan what was done well and what we could do better. We wanted to commit to a community-wide plan that really represented the aspirations, needs, and values of the entire community, not just segments of our community. We wanted to identify themes and priorities from that broad community engagement. We wanted to write it so that non-planners are able to understand it. We wanted it to be concise and without jargon. And then we wanted to make sure that it's not just used by, as a land use decision-making tool, but it guides other city initiatives and planning efforts as well. And as you saw last week, we had some other department head people here that are committed to making this plan work for them and, and use it going forward. But then we did just a short comparison between the 2005 plan and, and Imagine Urbana. So you'll see the yellow and green, trying to make that a little more evident that yellow is, that anything in yellow refers to the 2005 plan and then green, Imagine Urbana. So the same sections, we went through it. And I will say that when we were creating the Imagine Urbana plan, we didn't go back and just copy the sections, but they end up being almost the same. The one thing that was different in Imagine Urbana is we do have the section on metrics where we're tracking both community-wide metrics, which are the general indicators that reflect just Urbana as a whole, and then the specific metrics that are tied to each of the little moves. Then there's also an evaluation and reporting section in the 2005 plan where we outline how often the metrics are going to be updated and that we commit to Imagine Urbana progress reports that'll be regularly presented to the Plan Commission and Council and that we're going to be giving full updates on the plan every five years and actually updating it. So those two sections weren't in that original, or in the 2005 plan. There was some talk about the length last, at our last meeting, so I just went through and, and we put the pages in here. So the 2005 plan has 104 pages, and if you remember, it's on legal, legal-sized pages. And then there's a six-page appendix that's the maps. Imagine Urbana has 66 regular-sized pages and the appendix is 371 pages. And that's from us putting all of the reports that we've already done were in that appendix along with Examine Urbana, which is very large. It's 329 of those pages is Examine Urbana. So we didn't reiterate that information in the plan itself. Since it's already been reported on, we, we pushed those to the appendices. There's also no executive summary in the 2005 plan. Doesn't mean that there, there can't be. Yeah, in Imagine Urbana, I'm sorry. It doesn't mean that there can't be, but our intent was to have Imagine Urbana easily readable and short enough to encourage reading in its entirety. And in fact, if you remember from the study session, our community participation, the person that was in the room said she read the entire thing while she was sitting here in the meeting off of her cellphone. So hopefully that means that we at least partially fulfilled that goal. Then regarding the vision and values for Imagine Urbana, those grew from the themes. Everything came from our community engagement. And the vision and cornerstones, which they're called in the 2005 plan, those came from visiting sessions and then the steering committee actually put the, pinned to paper on those. There was also some talk about the graphic that was in, regarding the system of plans. And it's exactly the same graphic, we've just changed a couple of terminology there. Instead of calling them agency plans, in the 2005 plan, they're called community partner plans. We tried to make them more labor, or layman's terms or, you know, just things that people would be used to seeing or hearing, being, being able to understand what they mean. And then instead of strategic plans, we called them other city plans because there's a variety of plans that are there. Then in the 2005 plan, the existing conditions report is called the community profile. And we're now calling Examine Urbana, that's our existing conditions report. And as you know, it's an online version, there's videos, it's very interactive, and it is extensive, 329 pages. And it's built on chapters, and those were themes that also we saw in the, in our community outreach as well, those similar themes. The big ideas, just to be clear, I think there was some talk about, you know, what, what are they? And we say in the plan that they're, they're overreaching goals for the city, and they, they are. They compare to the goals and objectives that are in the 2005 plan. And then the big moves and little moves that we use in the 2005 plan, those are both the broad and specific strategic actions that are going to help us achieve the city's big ideas. And compared to the 2005 plan, those were called implementation strategies. But that's just a summary, a quick summary of kind of just some comparisons that would give us some additional context. And then as Kevin mentioned, we really felt like the, the main goal of last week's meeting was to make sure that we're prepared for the neighborhood meetings which are coming up. I'm not going to go through these, everybody's seen that, but they start next Thursday and go through the 19th. There's six different meetings at various times of the day. And we've been promoting those heavily, or we, probably more heavily than we've done anything else. There'll be ads beginning in the news gazette, we're already having the digital ads have started. We're in Smile Politely with ads. And in front of you, you have the article that Smile Politely did this week, which is, gave us some, some good feedback, and I followed up with the editor to get some more feedback from them. They mentioned it being cumbersome, so we want to find out, okay, how can we make it flow better? And so she's gonna share that information with me. So for the meeting coming up here next week, the printed maps are going to be available for public review. They're listed here, the students have been working on those. Kevin's gonna go over those in just, just a couple of minutes. We'll have poster boards, the students have already come up with the design for that. I sent some ideas back to them. They're gonna go to, we'll go to the printer tomorrow with those to get the poster boards made. We'll have one on the vision and values, big ideas, and then big moves and little moves. And so along with that, we'll have comment cards available so the public can make comments when they see the boards as well as make comments regarding to anything that they see on the map. We'll also have copies of the plan there. We've got an appendix of, our master copy of the appendix, it's very thick. We've got one there, of course, everything is available online. We'll have the flyer that has the QR code and web address for anybody that doesn't already have it, they can jump on. And then just talking about the online for just a moment, we are getting comments online from, we get the section comments. Lou and Dustin, I know you've gone through that process. Right now, we've had nine members of, or no, excuse me, 13 members of the public that have made comments to this point. So starting to get the word out more and, and getting that feedback. So at this time, well, Kevin, if you want to walk through the maps.
Can I ask a question before you turn it over? So as far as the meetings, at some point, either in the last Plan Commission meeting or in the meeting that we had with a smaller group of us, several weeks ago now, we talked about encouraging Plan Commissioners to attend these meetings. And I mean, that's, I can just say, you're all encouraged to attend these meetings, but we also talked about maybe sending out some sort of guidelines so that we don't run afoul of the Public Meetings Act. You know, if there's more than two of us that show up, you know, what should we not do, that kind of thing? Were we still planning to do something like that?
Yeah, we can definitely send out those guidelines. And I'm, I'm wondering if it might make sense just to, for us to ask folks which ones they plan to attend in advance so that we can kind of get, also get ahead of that. But, but we can, we can put together that guidance and send it along.
Okay, yeah, that'd be great.
Thanks. Okay, so I just want to get into the materials that the, the students have produced. And I, I think we, you know, we're calling this maps review and discussion, but I'd say all of this, you know, all of this work is important, so it's not just the maps. So I think we'll kind of walk through, first, I want to share what the tasks are so everybody's not in the dark. So there are those six tasks that I mentioned. So I'm just gonna pull up the, pull this up right now so we know what, what the students were tasked with to, to produce things for the public meetings. So I'll, I'll just kind of summarize these. So one was to look at changes, proposed changes between the 2005 future land use map and the, the draft future land use map. That's gonna be one of the posters that we, that we share at the meetings. The next task is to create, to create other maps for the upcoming Plan Commission and public engagement. So let me see if I can, yeah. So that's, okay, we, yeah, we'll get into that. Okay, and then the third task was to create text materials, so some little posters that have text on them that, that cover some of the things that are in the plan. The next one is to create descriptions for new future land use types, and those include graphics as well, sort of like little one-page sheets that we'll go through here in a few minutes. Our next task is to look at, and this is one that's gonna be sort of probably a little bit longer in coming, but a previous class had done what we were calling a development suitability analysis, and that was to sort of look at all of the land in Urbana and in our extraterritorial jurisdiction and basically be able to look at things like fire service, sewer service, and whether there's already development on the land, things like that. And then to be able to sort of rank or give a score to essentially every bit of land in the city so that you can say what areas are good for redevelopment or should, should probably be a higher priority for redevelopment and what areas are lower priority, priorities for, for redevelopment. So the, the previous analysis was, was really good. It had some shortcomings though, so we want to redo that. The main thing is that it, they weren't able to include the ETJ, the area outside the city that we have subdivision control over, which, that's kind of an important part when we're talking about potential annexations and things. So we're gonna build on that good work that they've already done, come up with a, a new analysis that includes the ETJ. And then the, the final production task, I'll call it, is to update the 2005 mobility map and, and compare that with the long-range transportation plan that the Champaign County Regional Planning Commission is putting together right now. That's going out for public review very shortly. And then to highlight any changes or, or issues with that. And then finally, the, the non-production but super important task is just somebody to manage the project. And it's been really useful to have that, that person already. His name is Matt, he's sitting back there. But that's, that's been great because we've been running, you know, I've been, me and Andrea have been running stuff through him and it's, it's really good to have that conduit. So those are all the tasks, and now we can just kind of dive into them to, to show. You know, these are all at different stages of, of completion as, as they're going to be, but we'll, we'll use these to, oh no. Okay, I might have to pull that one up later. I copied over an old version and I didn't copy the PDF, but I, I might have to run and grab that here in a little bit, so hold off on that one. Okay. Okay, so this is, is kind of similar to, to maps that I think I had shared previously and, and also similar to the, the online map. But this is essentially the, the future land use map, but also with some annotations. Right now, it's kind of light on annotations because those annotations will come out of these study sessions and, and come out of the, the public meetings that we have. But we've, we have added some to the map. I'll, I'll zoom in here in a second. I don't expect you all to, to read all these things from where you're at. But I did want to, so all the colors are future land uses, so. So these are the future land uses that, you know, again, are still in draft form and we've got another group sort of working on some of those. But, so these land uses, I need to get the hand, sorry. This isn't working as well as the one that I have on my computer. Anyway, the future land uses are residential, mixed residential, mixed use. There's two mixed use, one of them's a sort of a core, so like a downtown type. And then one of them is more like a neighborhood sort of mixed use down, like sort of a neighborhood downtown type, type use. One's commercial, so that's sort of general commercial things you'd see on, on Cunningham Avenue or University Avenue. One's green space and recreation. Also, we've got industrial and institutional to, to round out those, those eight uses, which are a few less than, than our current plan, I'll say. And let's see if I can get this thing to work. A little bit better, sorry about that. Okay. Oh, we did add, this is a, this is a very large file. I think it's, it's, it's large, so that's why it's being slow. One thing we did add on here that is the Urbana-Champaign sanitary district service limit. So that's the extent of sewers, so that's an important thing to have on the map. So you'll see that right here, and then it kind of goes, goes around. And sewer service is obviously a pretty big deal for, for future development. We can come back to this, but just wanted to show that and then I will, yeah, we'll get, yeah.
We're gonna convert this to a Illustrator or PDF to use it even online, right? Because this is gonna be really hard to use at a offsite.
Yeah, so that's what the online map that we have is, is for. So the one that I shared last time that you all have a link to, that online map will be.
Okay, we can talk about it later.
Yeah, this one, yeah, so this one's gonna be printed off very large so we can have those at the, at the meetings. Okay, and then here's some, the, sort of the text tasks. So this is taking the vision and values, the big ideas and the big moves, and putting those all sort of on, on posters that are, excuse me, that are easy to understand. And let's see if I can actually figure out how to fullscreen this thing. No, I think these are draft ones. We've given, we've given the group some, some feedback, so they will, yeah. So, so these will be updated before they get printed out. But so there's three pages that all, you know, these will be on poster boards. So the first one is about the vision and values. The second one is about the big ideas. And then the, whoops, and then the third one is larger, and this is gonna get filled in with, we'll make it large enough so that we can fit all of the, the 11 big moves and possibly little moves on, on one poster as well.
Kevin, can you go back to that previous one?
I can, and I can then zoom in as well. This one?
Yeah, I'm just wondering, like, like Andrea had in her presentation where you said, you know, what the, what these translate to into, in terms of goals and objectives, which is what people might be more familiar with? If that's not something that we should have briefly explained on this too?
It does say in the, they picked up on that right in the middle there, yeah, I'm sorry. In the middle, it says they're the overreaching goals for the city.
Okay.
So the students did pick up on that.
Okay, and then does it say, does it have an explanation for the moves?
That's on that next, next page.
Okay.
And just one of the things, since it's gonna be a visual, we really wanted to hit on what the priorities are. And on this particular slide is, is honing in on what those big ideas are. And so they're gonna play around with either through color or something else to really make those four things stand out on the slide. So that's the first thing that you see when it pops up, similar to the big moves as well.
All right, and then the future land use descriptions, so. So here's, so there's three of these pages that all have sort of a, a similar format. So you'll see the, there's the description, I should zoom in because people probably want to read that. Okay, so there's the, the description up top and showing a bit of the future land use map and then showing some examples, or some current examples in Urbana, but then also pulling examples from maybe other communities to sort of illustrate what each of these future land use types will look like. And then sort of scrolling down, some nice renderings and then some sort of what you think of as typical, classic plan view, sort of overhead view of sort of what that type of development would look like from above. So we didn't ask that group to do all eight of them in a week. We asked them to do three of them, so. So they did the, what was that, the mixed residential and then the, the mixed use, which again, these are sort of, the way we've, we've developed, these are sort of a, along a continuum of. a continuum of intensity. So, even the lowest-intensity residential districts can have some mixing of uses, so it's not, because when you want to build complete neighborhoods, you don't want only residential in a neighborhood, because that's not a complete neighborhood, and that's something we're trying to go for with this plan. But as you get sort of more intense, more mixing perhaps, more businesses and things, that's kind of how it steps up along the continuum.
Is that in the comprehensive plan, what you just said?
It may not, it may be one of those levels of detail that needs to be ironed out.
That would be good.
Thanks. Okay, and then the final one was commercial, which is just, you know, more of the commercial-type land that you think of, sort of, like I said, along Cunningham Avenue, University Avenue. The example they used here is the Meyer. And then again with, you know, with nice renderings and sketches and plan view. Actually, I'm not sure with that, let's see. Oh, that's, yeah, okay, this is the development suitability group, so I'm not going to get into that. I kind of gave a, gave the reveal that that one's going to take a little while longer, so. And then, so the mobility map, which is kind of cool because it looks very similar to the mobility map that we have in the current plan, but they updated it. So, you'll notice, so there's, you know, there's different projects on here, so numbers one and two were projects. So, one is Olympian Drive extending from Champaign over to Lincoln Avenue. One of them was the realignment of Lincoln Avenue. Those were in the current plan from 2005, those have been done, so those are depicted here as having been done. Some future things, the extension of Olympian all the way over to Cunningham, that's still in here as a sort of a future potential project, and then other things on here you'll see as future projects. They also added some projects from the, from the long-range transportation plan, that again is in draft form, so that's labeled here as potential projects. So, that's, so that's like the, there's some Curtis Road, side paths, and these are some side paths, six and seven are extending paths there. There's a Florida Avenue project, the Vine Street project, which is forthcoming. So, yeah, so they were able to take the existing map, update it, so we can have a discussion on that. And that kind of sort of wraps up the things that we'll be showing at these public meetings. We can go revisit any of these, discuss them as much as you'd like.
Yeah, thank you. Any comments or discussion, any of these that you want to take a longer look at? Mr. Rose?
May I ask, just as a, sort of a novice planner, professional elsewhere, but when we talk about mixed use and mixed residential, is there an implied direction for growth? If it implies, it seems to imply not only mixing like this, but transition over time. Is that the case or not? And if it is, if a transition is implied in that, does, should that, would that be expounded upon?
Well, so I think, yeah, I mean, I think transition is certainly implied, and one thing that I'd say, one big failure of the planning profession and zoning and how we've done things for the past 100 years is that zoning and planning has kind of been used to try to prevent all change in certain areas, and we've run into a lot of problems because of that. So, we're trying to introduce this concept of change, but not dramatic change, right? So, it's like, it's gradual change over time that, you know, is going to enhance areas, enhance neighborhoods, and not, you know, not ruin neighborhoods, right? But if you try and keep things completely static, then you sort of prevent that, you know, the natural changes and transitions that happen over time. Hope that answers the question.
It does.
Thanks.
Yeah, there's another map that you said you were going to possibly go get, which gets at this question of change, because there were changes from the 2005 future land use to the proposed, and that's what we kind of, a group tried to look at and point out where those changes were happening. So, you know, that would be an obvious place where there is potential for change if we're saying the future land use is different, or the category is different and it has different meanings.
But there is also the kind of change that you're referring to, which is within a category by implication.
Yes, but, right, but I do appreciate expanding further on my question to discuss overall change.
I just want to make sure there are two things here.
Yes. I have another sort of general question, and that is, as I expect to participate in some of these upcoming meetings, and not having been involved in the past with trying to solicit community engagement, do we have a sense of what to expect from these meetings in terms of number of people, volume of people? Are we going to be able to go back afterwards and say we did a good job or could have done a better job on soliciting community engagement?
I think the latter part of your question is the easier one to answer. And, yeah, I mean, I think we'll definitely have the ability to evaluate how well we did, but the first part of your question is, I mean, we, you know, we can try and put the word out as much as possible, and then it's kind of a roll of the dice when you go into those meetings, because you might have 200 people show up, you might have two people show up. But for all of you folks listening at home, if you show up, we are going to listen to you, so please do.
I might just reiterate what we have done to promote it, and that's something that we've thought about a lot. We sent it to 21,000 households in Urbana, the, you know, just hopefully on a bright postcard that stuck out in their mail with those locations on it. We sent out a information release that, to our media, and all the homeowners associations, neighborhood groups that we have, we've sent it to all of them, to stakeholders, sent that out as well. And I mentioned then, we're doing social media advertising, not only on the City of Urbana's website, but through Smile Politely, and also the New Gazette digital version. So, we're trying to reach as many, we've sent it to apartments as well, you know, like some that come to mind, Town and Country, Aspen Court, we had contacts there, so we're sending those directly. So, anyway, just trying to reach as many people as we can, and repetitively, so that, you know, it sticks. So, any meeting like this, we're hoping that, and the council as well, the council members are trying to get the word out into their wards. So, as Kevin said, you just never know until that evening what the turnout's going to be, but we've tried to give a lot of choices. They're not necessarily ward meetings, they're community meetings where you can go to any meeting, whatever's most convenient to you time-wise or location-wise, so just doing our best to try to get the word out, but it's unknown.
Was part of your question also, like, what are the expectations of plan commissioners when they're attending these meetings? Like, what are we going to do there?
Yes, and are there, are there meeting limits, are there open meeting limits other than, I mean, if three of us are there, but three of us are responding individually to issues that come up, that doesn't pertain, that doesn't...
Well, Kevin can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think our role is just to listen. So, we're not there to really participate in the meeting and to engage with the community members, but just to listen to what's being said.
Would we be expected to be tapped on the shoulder and harangued, or?
Refer them to staff.
Yeah, refer them to staff.
Refer them, okay, thank you.
I will say to kind of address your last point, the feedback that we've gotten online so far has been very constructive. Yeah, somebody might say, I wish you would fix my street first, or something like that, but most of them are very, very constructive comments that we've heard, they've really read the plan and providing us good feedback. So, I'm sure we might see some that, you know, have some more maybe emotional topics, but on the whole, the public's usually very responsive and very civil and provides excellent feedback. Carol reminded me, just to refresh your memories, we did do the Balancing Act in each of the wards, and it ranged, we had one where no one showed up at a meeting, and then we had some, probably the best one attended was 25 o'clock, and that might not have been because of our promotion efforts, but because they were having trivia night right after us. So, we had quite a few people, but we reached people that normally we wouldn't reach, so anyway. The best we can do is try to reach as many people as we can and promote it, again, tonight, all these different times, so, but they start September 12th.
And Bill, I know we do have some folks who are fans of plan commission meetings, I know because they've told me, but I think the, you know, the expectation that you might have a group of folks singling you out as a plan commissioner are probably minimal.
Well put.
So, I have just a couple of thoughts. One is small, just to be sure that the photos are reflective of the diversity of the types of housing styles, so I want to be sure we're not projecting a class stratification when I think about some of the neighborhoods. So, just to be thinking about that, one. And then two, and I'm going to say this, that it's late to the table, but what I haven't seen yet, and I don't know if it's because it's not explicit, is I haven't seen like what I could identify as targeted equity initiatives. I don't see what we're doing to address structural inequalities in certain neighborhoods, and I don't see, like, I'm sitting here thinking about communities that are typically underrepresented, and they're going to say what's in it for me, and I don't necessarily know. And I don't know if we want to just sort of highlight like what you would identify as an equity initiative, or, you know, because maybe it's, because it's not obvious, but and maybe it was like implied and not directive, but it might be nice to sort of think about how you're going to address, like, what's going to make it better for people who typically have historically been underrepresented and marginalized, and if there are things. And then two, and this is sort of parenthetically, right, that I get that the idea around creating definite and definitive boundaries around neighborhood is to create more neighborhood cohesion and to do community building, and the, you know, the, what I am aware of, because we have structural inequality in equities, is that could that create far more divisions and actually get in the way of some of the other goals here? And so, I would wonder, what are those thoughtful strategies that we're not creating more boundaries that are restrictive and not allowing for more inclusion? So, sorry.
No, that's good. I think there's probably a three-part question there, but just first addressing, you bring up a really good point about what actions really relate to equity, and one of the exercise that we did with Balancing Act, you actually got points for the different things you did, and it gave you an equity point, or it gave you a sustainability point, and maybe we can do a, kind of relate that more to what we have here in our little moves as well, the action items, because that was real evident. People would say, we'd tell them, okay, that initiative that you chose, that you prioritized, that added an equity point, and the two things we tracked were equity and sustainability, those two things. So, maybe we could kind of expand that exercise possibly into our little moves, but it's a really good point. I think Kevin can address maybe the boundary issue.
Yeah, well, I mean, I think your comments are great, and we will, we will, you know, think about them, think about ways to address them, because I think there are things in the plan that we can, you know, we can call out as, you know, particularly addressing And that might be my whole response, is you've given us something to think about in terms of how we present the things. To the boundary issue, we've been explicit not to define neighborhood boundaries anywhere in the maps that we're using, because I think, I mean, I don't, I don't even know what the neighborhood boundaries are, I can kind of, I look at maps a lot, I can kind of say, these are probably the neighborhood boundaries, but I don't live in every neighborhood, so I don't know what those boundaries are. Lou?
You've already heard it from me, you've got a statement here that one of the action types is to create explicit neighborhood boundaries and develop boundaries.
Sorry.
And I've already pointed that out, and Karen, I mean, I've got a bunch of sort of technical reasons why it's a bad idea, Karen has actually added another one, which is more substantive than the ones I was worried about. You know, I can find it if, you know, but it's explicitly in the plan, and it's a fundamental problem.
I think you're referring to Big Move 3, Create Neighborhood Plans?
Yeah. I think it's interesting that Karen recognized it as a substantive problem, and we weren't aware it was even in the plan.
Well, that's definitely, that is how the move is written, because we want to, when we're, with the comprehensive plan, we can't get to the level of detail necessary for small areas, so I don't know if we call them small-area plans or something, if neighborhood plan is sort of a, like, I don't want to give the wrong impression with that.
Get rid of the label, and I've already argued that that's not the right way to approach it anyway. If we want to talk about small-area plans, there's probably better jargon.
Okay.
But that also means that they're really about something else, and that gets back to this boundary notion and definitions and images and class stratification and lots of other things.
Do you think, you know, there's, can you put up the, like, the one-pager land use?
The, oh, the, whoops, that's not it, hold on a second. No, future, these ones?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Back to the residential.
Yeah, go back to one of the residential ones.
Yeah.
I mean, I do think this is where there is an opportunity, because the plan does talk about things like, you know, Big Move 1, address, you know, develop a plan to address Urbana's diverse housing needs, right? So, the challenge is how to represent that idea in something like this.
Right.
And so, I think, you know, that looks, this is where we've gotten into the potential frustration of having really large categories that cover large areas of residential development in the city without a lot of nuance, and, you know, that, in some neighborhoods, that might be mean allowing ADUs, right, that are a more affordable source of housing in someone's backyard or whatever. In another neighborhood, that might be duplexes or fourplexes, right? So, I think that's, that's kind of, this is just a first draft, but I think that's maybe something, and I think some of this will hopefully come out in the public meetings, so that we're not telling people, you know, our version of that initially, but putting something out there that they can... out there that they can react to and say, well, why don't you have this type here? Something like that. So, but yeah, I think that's, that's a big challenge. The challenge is to figure out, you know, how are we representing all of these big ideas and big moves in these kind of visuals that we're making to really be more effective at communicating these things? And I don't have the answer, but I imagine it's going to be a kind of iterative process. So the more, the more like comments that you can give that are like very specific, the better, right? Because then we can go back and try and, the students can go back and try and address these things. Doesn't have to be tonight, because you're just seeing this, but at some point.
Yeah, so I, I think, you know, Dustin, what you were just, just talking about makes me think this, this notion of incremental development that we've kind of tossed in there without a whole lot of detail. We might need to, well, we were already planning on expanding that to sort of explain what that is. But, I mean, that's kind of the notion of incremental development is, is, well, it's incremental, so it's, it's small. It's not, it's not giant, you know, giant changes to the neighborhood, sort of back to, to my response to what Bill had asked about earlier. But it is sort of a, you know, it's something that's nuanced for each neighborhood. And so, so there are neighborhoods where, you know, backyard cottages, ADUs, accessory dwelling units, you know, whatever terminology we're talking. That might be appropriate in certain neighborhoods as, you know, as the next increment of development. In other neighborhoods, yeah, it might be fourplexes. So I think, yeah, we need to flesh that concept out more. And then, yeah, figure out how, how to tell that story to whatever neighborhood, you know, whatever folks we're talking to in various neighborhoods. And I don't know how you do, I don't know how you can do all of that in a one-page thing like this that's showing four images. But we like challenges, students like challenges, so we'll, we'll figure something out.
Yeah, well, I mean, we have images, we have renderings, and we have, you know, Plan View graphics. So I think there's a variety of places where we can try and tell the story that, that we think should be there.
Well, we have access to Google Earth at the neighborhood meetings?
Like the street view stuff? Or, we, we could, yeah.
I don't know how hard that is, but knowing how well it worked in class, I can imagine that if somebody said to me in a meeting, well, this looks like upper-middle-class housing, and you're focusing on something that doesn't look like my neighborhood. The advantage of having Google Earth is we can say, okay, what neighborhood do you want us to look at? And we can look at it. And, because I'm thinking right now, okay, how, how would I imagine from looking at a neighborhood and imagining it in plan terms, whether it connoted class stratification? And I think I could learn, but I know I don't know.
Having, having lived experience, there are some things, right?
That's what I'm saying. I think I could learn, but I need.
Tends to have, one, primarily ranch-style houses, very, not as great street lighting, right? Just very few sidewalks, right? Like unfortunately, and, and we're expanding, but you can go, if you go walk in Canvas, there are things that are available, and then there are things that aren't available. And I incur, I mean, like, I unfortunately walk neighborhoods a lot, and it.
Okay, yeah, I mean, that's what, that's what I'm trying to get at.
Not bad or good, it's just, you know, unfortunately, because of history, there's settlement patterns that create.
Right, but I think there's more than that. Because in my neighborhood, right sidewalks, the streetlights either. But I don't think, well, I think my neighborhood might be called class stratified, but not in the other way. So, so I think that's why I want to see, you know, sort of whole picture. Anyway, it's work we got to do.
Yeah.
Got that, students?
We should go for a walk.
Yeah, we should go for walks.
So Lou, do you just walk in the street? Sorry, I'm, I'm curious about your neighborhood. People walk in the streets, there's no sidewalks?
Oh, absolutely. People drive to my neighborhood to walk in the street and walk their dogs.
Unless we get off on a walkability tangent.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, sorry.
I mean, there's more discussion to be had, and it actually affects some things, some substantive things, back to equity and affordability and so on.
I think that's a.
But that's a different discussion. At the moment, we're trying to focus on what we need for next week.
Yeah, that's agenda item number six in the study session tonight, topics for future Plan Commission study sessions.
Field trips.
So back to the graphics, thanks, Ms. Sims, these are great comments, very helpful, I think. Are there any other comments that anyone has? Having a quick look at these. Lou, Ms. Hopkins?
So we, we have, we've got the changes in future map that I've seen.
Yeah, yeah, we do.
And, and which basically works. Yes?
Yeah, it was, it was just, it was uploaded as an Illustrator file.
That's what I mean. You agree that it sort of works, and I've seen it, so I'm pretty sure it works.
Yeah, I've got some ideas, yeah, I've got some ideas that I can share with the students to make it better, but yeah.
The annotated map, my impression is that students had a more annotated version of that, or is that what you were showing us?
I was showing you, yeah, this, this is the map that they, that they put together. I don't know, I don't think they've added any annotations to it. I think they've just made the, some of the annotations and things more legible.
Because, because I think they're going to have to be even more legible, let's put it that way.
Yeah, well, this.
That, that can be dealt with with, that's a more technical issue.
Yeah, I mean, this, again, this one's intended to be printed out at three by four feet. So this zoom right now is not, I can't even tell, oh, there we go.
Yeah, I mean, we might need two versions. If one is going to be on a easel, and then one's going to be on a table, then those might be two different versions in terms of font size.
Okay.
Well, but, I mean, you could figure out from where you're zoomed in, what it's going to be like at three by four feet.
Well, that's, yeah, this is 100%, so this is what, this is the legibility it should, it should be at, yeah.
And, and the type is barely readable, so, anyway.
So we have a week, we have a week to figure it out.
Yeah, right. That's what I mean. I'm, I'm, I mean, the idea for our focus at the moment is getting ready for these meetings and what do we got? So I just was trying to be sure I understood which map was which. In terms of the materials for next week, I think I don't have other comments.
Yeah, I guess, does anybody see any glaring issues with, you know, with anything we're, we're throwing out there? Again, these are all in draft form, but is there anything missing before we go, you know, refine these things and take them out to the public next week that?
They all need to say "draft" in big letters somewhere. Everything needs to have that on, it's like a watermark.
Yes, okay.
The Downtown Core and the Secondary Core are just different tints of purple, is that?
Uh, let's see, yeah, I think that's how they, I think that's how they're depicting them, yeah. Yeah, so there's sort of this lighter purple here, and then there's darker purple here, so.
I would even, I would make the contrast more.
Yeah.
It's kind of hard to distinguish. I would make the, the Downtown Core darker purple for now.
Okay.
Some of this will go back to student work, right?
All of it, all of it goes back to the student groups, I think. Any other comments on this?
Lot of work. You guys have been working really hard. I think you can, you know.
Thank you. I would say the students have been working very hard too, and like I said, very fast. And I'm, yeah, I cannot express how impressed I am with it, so.
All right, I'm trying to find that agenda. Should we move on?
Yeah, topics, I feel like we've heard some topics for future Plan Commission study sessions already, but if.
What do you got so far?
Well, this notion about neighborhood plans as one of our big, big ideas, whether that should be a thing or not. The addressing, or, yeah, being more explicit, I'd, I'd say about how inequities are being addressed with various parts of the plan. I don't know if we need to do a deep dive into incremental development slash walkability, some of those things that we're already planning to redefine better.
I think Lou has that on his list.
Yes.
As one of his things.
Really? Lou's creating a list, huh?
Already got it created. Kevin?
Yes.
I would add, on, under the idea of Urbana as a city of connected neighborhoods, there are four bullet points, and the first one seems to me to be the most bothersome. The other three are workable.
I guess nobody has pointed out that we need page numbers on here, but we need page numbers on here. Or maybe, I think Andrea noticed.
They need to be thrown out as opposed to by chapter, or if they're by chapter, they need to be hierarchical by chapter.
Ah, so Billy, you're talking about the one that uses the word neighborhood twice? Says neighborhoods build on their assets and create neighborhood plans?
Sure, hadn't noticed that, but yeah. But the idea of creating neighborhood plans seems, if we're not going to do it, why are we encouraging them to do it?
Anything else, Lou, that we haven't talked about?
So you threw with your list?
I think so. I didn't really have a list. It was sort of desperately scribbled notes on various pages, but I'm, I'm ready for your list.
Well, so I, I would take as added to my list from tonight and from yours, the neighborhood plans issue slash neighborhoods issue, and the inequities writ large. So the, I, I divided the topics I want to be able to deal with into larger categories. One is what I would think of as substantive issues that we need to clarify, elaborate, modify, you know, discuss, because we may want to change the substance. And then a second set is sort of technical edited, editing document structure, that kind of.
Can you give examples of when, what you're considering?
Okay, so, yeah, I'm gonna, I've got example, I've got not only examples, but a list, which I can explain if people want to know. So the walkability default, yeah, I mean, the simple version is there's a better statement in that subsection of what the overall statement should be. Walkability cannot be the default, because it doesn't mean, anyway, that's a substantive argument, I gather, because of the way it's set up now. It's got to be set up a different way. I think there is an overemphasis on the downtown. And this is a problem from two directions. One, I think it fantasizes about the role of the downtown. And two, it leaves out by implication the importance of the rest of the city. And anyway, we, this is a substantive discussion. Then the, the mixed-use residential, mixed-residential, the, I, I like the addition of the transition issue involved in these. And we'll probably get a really good discussion about that on the 19th, because of a case before the commission. And it will demonstrate, I hypothesize, why we need to deliberate about that set of ideas more thoroughly as part of the comp plan process, if we hope to make any progress. Affordable housing broadly speaking. Affordable housing is not just about density. And having as one of the first, if not the first, big move that we're going to do, a plan about affordable housing is like saying, you know, we haven't done anything about it.
And it's not a plan on affordable housing, it's a housing study. It's all encompassing, not just affordable.
I understand, but the point is, it implies that we've done all this work, and we're setting out the most important, long-range principles, knowledge, setting out intent for the city. And we're acting as if we don't know anything yet, that we have to study it. And I think we know a lot, and are not being straightforward as we could be about what we are implicitly saying about it and what we are not saying about it, in terms of where we're going. Anyway, it's a substantive discussion. I mean, I'm not saying that it's simple, or that I know the answer. And then the annexation policy, it, it says we should develop one, but then on the maps, it's got annexation should be fiscally responsible. And I think this is problematic and needs discussion. If we are going to say that annexation needs a policy, I would argue it should be a triple bottom line policy. Stating that it's only a fiscal policy undermines the rest of the goals and visions that the city has set out. Fiscal, yes, but a triple bottom line acknowledges that it's not just fiscal. And so that's, I, I think that notion, saying in a comp plan that we're going to develop an annexation policy, and then writing on all the plans for every area out there, that it's, and saying in the document that it's fiscal-focused is not good enough. Anyway, so those, those plus the other ones, I think, are topics that need to be talked about probably a lot.
And Lou, I think you brought up one at the 2020, or the 822 study session also, just about the future land use descriptions, and maybe just looking at those. And I think the students are looking at that.
Oh, yeah, I know.
Yeah, so that's on the list also, I think.
Well, yeah, but that's under the technical editing. So a way to, to separate maybe more, more helpfully is, what I just described, I think, that I think need to be talked about in a broader setting, and could be talked about now without further staff work. So the, the next set of things are things that staff and students and whatever probably need to do some work on first before they come back with them. So one is the, the elements of the adopted, of what is proposed to be the adopted plan. We need to be explicit, and there, there are two kinds of issues here. One is, are we going to adopt a chunk that will, let's for the moment call Imagine Urbana, with a set of other plans that have been adopted as amendments to the previous plan? And which ones of those are we going to ad- And which ones of those are we going to adopt? For example, are we gonna adopt the bicycle pedestrian, my guess is yes. Are we gonna adopt the hazard mitigation, my guess is maybe not. And we need to go through those adoptions, which were aggregations of documents as opposed to amendments to the plan, which were sort of trivial, some of which actually shouldn't have been made, but that's another whole issue. So we need to be clear what the document, what the adoption is gonna be. And we need to work that out, it's not just somebody going and saying, oh, it's this, this, and this, we gotta decide what that is. And then there's another aspect to this, it gets back to one of the notions about this plan versus the previous plan that's in the handout for tonight, where did it go? And, and I think this has to do with the way the plan gets structured. As, so, so we have to adopt something through a process, we have to figure out what that is. And that's also a technical problem, there's another issue about that. But, in, in the statement, the, the overriding goals for the new plan guides other city initiatives and planning efforts and not an isolated tool to land use, to use for land use decisions. Now, the notion that it shouldn't be isolated, correct, I mean, correct, I, I agree with, let's put it that way. But, the notion that the kinds of documents that have a sort of five-year time horizon and are mostly lists of to-do lists for immediate action or two or three action by all the departments of the city is sort of structurally incompatible with the way a comprehensive plan gets adopted, amended, and revised. So, to think of the extreme separation, there's the, I, I'm gonna mangle the label, but there's the council, the mayor and council annual strategic priorities, goals and priorities plan. Which is usually a year's focus, but maybe not all expected to get done in a year. Some of what's in this plan, that the Imagine Urbana current draft, is closer to that. And, I, my, my thinking is, we need to structure this so that we separate the to-do lists from the principles and criteria for future decisions. Because they get used in very different ways, and some of the little moves are to-do list moves, and some of them are principles and criteria. And the same is true of the metrics, and the metrics and, they need to be sorted and worked out. Because the to-do list things, you check off and they're done, and the principles and criteria continue for 20 years. And almost every comp plan I've ever seen says we're going to review it every year and update it every five years, and it does not happen. So, we should not imagine that just because we say we're gonna do that, that it will actually happen in this case. So, so we need to, we need to think about how that structuring comes up. So, so that's an organizational thing, which, we also have to focus on the metrics, cause they confuse that stuff. The Examine Urbana, some of which is great and has great data in it, but a 371-page appendix is not going to be something used as a reference in a Plan Commission meeting or any, even by a staff report, to link the logic behind anything, to have the legal backing, to make the kinds of decisions we have to make. So we need to figure out a way to have a much, a concise, but explicit link from some of our data and arguments to some of our proposals and criteria and principles. And that, that's another structuring problem. We have to clarify and represent all the development types, that's, and complete the maps, which I know we're working on, and the list has a plausible list of maps. And we, we made a lot of progress, but we're still working there. And then, sort of as a final thing, we have to imagine how we're gonna construct something that we say is the comp plan. And includes a bunch of stuff, not just what's in here. And it's gonna have to have, we have to know what it is, and we have to know how it exists, I mean, you know, it, it has to have some... It may be in many ways virtual, but it has to have some materiality so we know what it is. And that, that's not clear at the moment. So, anyway, that, that's a list of things that can keep staff and students and some others busy for a while before they come back before the commission. So, anyway, that's, that's my list.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else have anything else that they wanna add in terms of topics for future discussion?
I just have a small one, and it's related- There's research and work around- Doesn't link resilience- Eleven together. So the strategies that are coming out from the federal government ask you to think about issues of climate, which actually impacts- So when we're thinking about planning, I, I want us to maybe, uh, that category more broadly, not just, again, inclusive neighborhoods being about crime and safety and green space being something different. It's not, there's a larger category of work that really looks at community resilience that infuses them. And secondly, because, and, and this is semantics, I always have problems with the word access, cause that means that if I can take a bus to it, I have access to it, and it doesn't mean that I have it. And so, we could play around with different language, but things like transportation, recreation, schools, I should have. Like, I, I shouldn't just be able to kinda get to it, do you know what I mean? Like, it should be a core part of, of, of the city's guarantee to me. Cause I think, again, when I hear access, it doesn't, doesn't always imply have. And, you know, so does, you know, and, cause like I, when I talk to public health, you know, having a mobile van does not guarantee me healthcare. It is, you gave me access, yeah, but there are a whole range of other healthcare services that I should also be able to take if we need a job. Does that, okay. I always have, that access word is problematic, and I don't know how we say, but I don't think there's anything on this list. Like, we wouldn't say residents shouldn't have equitable access, shouldn't have, shouldn't have, right?
Thanks. Yeah, I, I mean, since I also submitted comments online, I don't know if I wanna repeat everything that I already submitted, but what you mentioned makes me think of something that, that I picked up when I was going through this initially, which is that starting from like big move eight through big move, move 11, you know, I don't know exactly how these were put together, but you kind of get the sense that they're like individual departments that were responsible for certain big moves. And so you ended up with something that was kind of siloed, and not only is there potential for synergies between some of these big moves that aren't really discussed and taken advantage of, but there's also some redundancy that occurs between some of these big moves from eight through 11. So it kinda seems like, you know, one department put a couple, put a couple of big moves in there, and another department that has a different responsibility could have put a couple of big moves in there, and the reality is that they're, you know, they're both trying to achieve similar outcomes, and so I think we need to do a better job of, one, making it seem like this is more cohesive and, and address the redundancies, but also talk about like what Ms. Sims was, you know, referring to, how some of these things are tied together, and we need to be more explicit about that. And I don't know if that's a topic of discussion, or if that's just a technical, to go off of Lou's separation of things.
I, I think the, the, the issue is how we do it, so. Well, I think what you're describing implies, to me anyway, staff work.
Yeah.
That is, it implies some redrafting, some, you know, portions presented in new versions. Modifications of the overall structure, and yours implies, and maybe Karen's, that big moves one through 11 is not the right structure. That maybe, you know, something else, but anyway, we can't do that redrafting, or it's difficult to do that kind of redrafting in a meeting. And, and so that's the distinction I was trying to make, not, I mean, I couldn't come up with a good way to... What I put in parentheses from my notes is mostly staff initially. That's really the distinction.
Yeah. I mean, I think we've, there's been a lot of good feedback in terms of that, so, I mean, it would be good to to, you know, see, see what kind of changes are made, not, not just from what we've given in commission, but the feedback that we've given through the online platform. To see that come back around with, you know, some different proposals that address some of those issues. But, yeah, I don't know that they're necessarily topics that we need to plan for. Trying to think, I... The one that I was gonna mention was that we need to spend time, I think Lou mentioned, you know, mixed residential and mixed use in particular. I think the future land use category is more broadly, I mean, not all of them, but I think there's, there's discussion that also needs to happen around how we're treating mixed use and the core and the secondary core versus other ways of, of maybe representing that, that might be more appropriate or easily, more easily to understand. So, I would say, expand that discussion, when we have that discussion, expand that beyond just talking about the residential neighborhoods to include at least the, the mixed-use neighborhood. I think the other, I mean, commercial kind of gets drawn in there a bit, but the institutional, industrial, green space, recreation, I don't know that we need to spend a lot of time with that as a discussion. I mean, definitely as something that the, the students are working on to represent those ideas visually. Anything else? Alright.
Okay, thank you all.
Do you want to, like, go back through those? I don't know what, well, I think what, what we wanted to do was not just to spout off a bunch of things that we should talk about in the future, but also think about how those array out, how those get scheduled out over the next series of Plan Commission meetings where we can potentially have study sessions. Maybe that's too hard to do on the fly tonight, but-
Yeah, that's kind of the impression that I'm, I'm getting in, in my own head, but I'm not the only head that's here.
Yeah, well, maybe, since, I imagine the next Plan Commission meeting will probably potentially be mostly taken up with the case. Depending on how long that goes, maybe we can, you can present that list back to us with a, some suggestion on how we split that off into study sessions?
That sounds good.
Okay.
Yeah.
And, you know, potentially we can tackle something in that meeting, that just depends, I don't really know what to expect about this case yet, but...
I haven't written the staff memo yet, so I'm not sure.
There you go, there you go.
The proposed text amendment has been submitted to us, yes. That's what... You're, you're talking about the case for the 19th, right?
Yeah, submit, I thought it was coming from staff.
No, it's coming from David Huber, a local developer.
That was, was that in the announcement?
Yeah.
Oh, I missed that.
I mean, I don't blame you, it's the first outside text amendment I think I've ever seen, they don't really come, they usually are staff-initiated.
Where my base rate just read right over that.
Alright, so there was one last item, which was the public input on Imagine Urbana. Did you guys have something that you wanted to say about that, or, or, oh!
The, the public that's, that's here, that's-
Uh, I forgot, okay. Yeah. You guys wanna come up and say anything? No? Alright. Okay, let's get back to the, the larger agenda then. But I think that's it, then. With that-
Unless you want more, sort of guidance or whatever on-
Yeah, do, do you feel like you have enough guidance?
I think, I think we're good. Dustin, I think you were supposed to pick up that mic and just drop it there.
Alright, we are adjourned.
Alright, thank you all.